I thought we were about to get serious. You know me and you, I didn't know you would make love in another place too. I wasn't ready to settle down, now you won't see me around. You're hard, you're a lady, you're been a bad, bad, bad boy lately. It's not perfume on you, but I guess it's not mine, where have you been? I thought you were mine, how could I be so dumb, 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 dumb? It's not perfume on you, but I guess it's not mine, where have you been? I thought you were mine, how could I be so dumb, 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 dumb? I don't like cherries, I don't like cherries, I don't like cherries. Here I am, compose me, I'm your music, your inspiration, you're yours. I'm e-e-every note you play, I'm every note you play. My breath, my smell, my taste is music, my eyes, my lips, my hands are music. I'm the melody, the song you long and so play. So tonight, I'm a breeze, put your fingertips on my body. And bo-boo-boo face me baby, boo-boo-boo face me baby.
Alright, good afternoon everyone. Before we start you up, I just positioned my mic properly. That should be okay. Alright, good afternoon. Welcome to a bit more Sniper Elite. I am... Just done with my exam, and I watched a bit of football. Um... But... But... I was feeling a bit like some Sniper Elite. Hey, uh, I was watching the last half of Brazil, it was pretty fun. Uh, you had, uh... Them doing what they do best, about 130 meters. Um... With a base Dutch referee having no bullshit, and, uh, doing a pretty good game. Alright, I would like to take care of him... Um... Once he walks back, since he has a pretty good vantage point. I'll just shoot him and see what comes out of it. Uh, I am going to make proper use of, uh, save still. Window slightly that way, it's about 100 meters. Oh, g- you have to be shitting me! This gay man, there's no one on the beach... I don't think he'll get noticed there, but... So... What do we have here? Mosin Naguns? Is there anyone... Here? You... 200 meters. Oh, and him! Anyone else here? It can be a bit of a cheat, so he's 200, perfect. He's about 180, let's make a save here. Um... Need to make sure to take care of the back guy first. Uh, 200? Hmmmm... Got him! Alright, that was a pretty good shot. Now where's the other guy? Where are you, where are you? Oh, you're behind the... Oh shit. Where's the last guy, where's the last guy? I can't see him because of the damn tree. Okay, this is not good. Where are you? I just saw the remove tag. There, okay, there he is. Oh shit. Come on, silence. Oh, what the hell did I hit there? Okay, um... So, while I can kill that guy, there's one, ah, there we go. I see. Now if we take care of him, that should be fine. Uh, oh shit, of course he's 230 meters, not... 200. That should be it. Did he notice? Okay, he didn't, good. You are perfect 200, ah, but there's, now there's both of them. How dare you counter-stream your Overlord Jake? Um... I can watch a stream... While, um, okay, this might be a double kill. I can watch a stream just fine while working on a report, but I can't stream myself. And I would like to do that now. We need the double kill here, come on, come on! Oh, did we, did we get him? Ah, no! Uh, did we get the other guy? I think we did. Oh, that was beautiful! That was actually really lucky. Oh, but there's another guy. Is there two of them? I can see you. Okay, good. Uh, ghosts, so they still don't know where I am. And it was still sound masked, now... If you're killing them with the ghost method, they will not find out where you are. So that's fine. Hey there Owen. But yeah, I'll, uh, I'll make, if Jake's finished streaming, I think he has a giveaway later, I'll, I'll do that, cuz... Well, I might be done with my exam, and not done with, for this weekend just yet, cuz I still have a report to make. Um... Wish I have to hand in Sunday, that's a lot of fun. If I see someone patrolling here, I'll be very happy, cuz that means that they haven't been alarmed. But, I can't see anyone. Alright, I'm just gonna make a second save, just to be safe. What's he doing? He is cautious, which means they know that I'm here. But if I kill them in the ghost method, that's fine. I don't care really about them being alarmed, as long as they don't know where I am. How productive, I just see, it's been pretty well, I had the exam today, and that went pretty well. Um... Cuz it was very similar to the test exam, so... I prepared, uh, I prepared more than enough for that, so I'm pretty sure that I passed that. Uh, I'd be very surprised if I didn't. It's a bit annoying since the first time I was sick, so... I could've just made it the first time, but, well... Ah, an officer, that's very good. 200 meters. Let's wait till the next blast, need to leap just a bit. I'm getting a lot better at this. Headshot, oh, that's just... Beautiful. Um, it's very important to get rid of the officers, because... They can, um, can call in artillery strikes on your position. And, uh, if you're trying to be silent... Sorry, if you're trying to be, uh, sneaky, that isn't helping much, I need to make sure they don't disable that. Because if they get rid of your, um... If they call an artillery strike on you, you're, you're kinda boned. See if there's any more that I can get rid of here. I'll need to go to the church too, to go to the graveyard. I see no one looking at his corpse, that makes me very happy. I'm gonna do the one last check here, cuz I know I saw someone more... There, but, uh, I don't see anyone. I'm surprised there's no one up there, ah! Um, ah, shit. Oh, okay, there we go, he's still, 150 meters. Okay, this is gonna be a very hard shot. Uh, well, it's gonna be even worse if he's behind the rock. Okay, there we go. Silence. Ah shit, I hit his leg. There we go. Wait, what? Yeah, eat it sucker. Um, still bad, no longer ghost, I think. They might know where I am. There's still a radio operator we have to take out?
Where there's a church, there's probably a graveyard.
Wait, what, what are you looking at? Is that a... That ain't no church. But, we still have to go to a church, so... Is anyone investigating his corpse? Yes, there is. 150 meters again. Hmm, I don't think we're gonna get this guy before I get another sound mask. Nah, shit. Unless he comes out of that door, oh, I see him there, but I'm not sure. Let's, uh, breathe out, reload. No, I already did. Hiding 130 meters. Uh, yeah, he's moving, but it's too dark. Hey, I see you. 150, perfect. Oh, come on... Wh-what the hell am I m- oh, ah, shit, of course. Come on... Okay, uh, this is going very, very bad. But I see he's cycling in between them. I'm surprised I can even see that. Keeps a tatty copy of Mein Kampf on him at all times, that's so goddamn German. But, just need to make sure that I get him once he's, uh, here. So what I think I was doing wrong is I was, um, adjusting the height, so now I've adjusted above. So it should be... It's way too high. But, ow, no, I messed up. Yep, I messed up big time. So, I was aiming like here, and that's 200 meters away. Oh... It's 150, I, I, I'm in... If it's one is closer, it would've been higher, so here, I, I had it zeroed wrong, I see, I see what I did wrong. Uh, if they, if you shoot too much... While being, um, out of cover, as it were... Yeah, they will notice you, and they will alarm people, so it's a very bad idea to do. I'm just gonna leave those be, and I'm gonna carry on. You receive ex... You receive information what your expected work country report would be, uh, differs a lot per report. This report in principle, they just said... Um, sometimes you get a page count, sometimes you get a word count, uh, although it's rarely that. Um, they usually just give guidelines, and say, "We want it to be roughly this, or roughly that." In this case, they gave very little information, I think, yeah, I saw you. How far are you away? 100, I'm not gonna bother with you. Um, I'm actually gonna go, look at the map. So... I'm, right now I'm here. I was looking here at the church, did they call this a church? I think the graveyard turn, it's gonna be here or here, so I'll have to do that before we go, but that's fine. So I'll probably travel along the side here. Go up here, cuz this is probably another high vantage point, and take out more people. Try and find another, uh, cuz we did this, we need to find a radio operator too, I'm gonna guess it's gonna be here-ish, maybe that tower. Graveyard will do after that. That seems like a signal tower. Relay tower, yep. We will need to destroy this, or take out the operator. Oh, I think that's him, that's a radio operator, that's another guy. I think we can take these out at the same time. However, um... Let's see if I can get closer and still get the sound masking. I should be able to do that here, shouldn't I? Yes, I do.
Better deal with the radio operator, before he goes telling...
Awesome, 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 let's make other save. But yeah, the report for this, for this, this one needs to be not that long. Um, he doesn't even want an introduction, doesn't want the materials and methods really. Um, just mostly results, because this isn't a, uh, practical, that was, how far are you actually? Uh, 160. So it's here you went 100. Uh, cuz this report was mostly, um, uh, practical based, so mostly result based, cuz we had about a week of eight day, eight hours a day practicals. And then, um... Uh, you, at the end, we had the result, and that we marked down. So if your result is good, but your report is shitty, you're still gonna get marks, but you still need a five and a half. Cuz I think, I think it's like half of our mark in the end, is this, uh, this practical, which like 30% Is the report and 20 is your actual, alright. Oh, I was way too high. I need to take these guys out in one shot. Okay, so... Yeah, um, I need to aim higher, just about here. The wind is dead here, and that's really awesome. Okay, they're walking outside. Need to be a bit more, okay. No, don't, ah, yeah, come on, just a bit closer. Yeah, I need to, uh, I need to get that properly, so where the 2 kilometers kill? Um, 2 kilometer kill, this even goes out, only out to half a kilometer. Um... There are some in the game. I know that. I need to be a bit more to the right here. Yeah, like this. I need to be 150, so it's about here-ish. Uh, the practical itself was genetically modifying E. coli cells... In two different ways to test which one was more efficient. And comparing a homolog of Arabidopsis, which is a plant... Um, which is a GL, GLA1-2 gene, compared it to the GLNA gene, which is E. coli. So, plant versus bacteria, see how similar they are. Uh, and if they work, if you put the plangene in a, uh, E. coli, and they did, that's what we, uh, we, we found out. But it works a whole lot worse, alright. Should be about, come on... Move, 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 come on, just a bit. That's way too high. That's just a bit too high. It's fine if I actually kill either of them first. Uh, if, because their backs are turned to each other. So they won't know if the other guy drops ironically. But I'm still aiming way too high, um, hmm, I need to get a better feeling for this drop. At 150, I think this is about what I want at 150. Uh, but yeah, so we spent a few days taking a gene, uh, copying it over with PCR, where you just make a, a lot of copies, like a few million. And then mixing those with a vector, which is a circular piece of DNA, which we cut apart out to insert our own gene that we want. And then you just mix that with the cells, which you made competent, so you made them, if possible, to take up another bit of DNA. Then let those sit for an hour, so they can get their, uh, antibiotics going. And then plate them on an agar plate, and then see if they grow. And there's a few ways you can check if they actually produce the right compound. I just cannot kill these. If it's a headshot, okay. Okay, I know the height that I now need to shoot at a lot better, cuz I actually got a proper hit. So if you can see... If I go to 100, a headshot will be roughly in the small open bit below, just, just a bit higher. So if I keep that pose at his jaw, so at his, at his head in between like this... I should be able to hit a headshot on both of them. And kill them at once, cuz I really want that. Was it group based? Yeah, and I worked together with someone who was rather incompetent. Uh, the first step, we needed to isolate RNA. And he screwed that up immensely, because he grabbed the wrong primers. So we didn't get more copies at all. Um, if you're, if... It's a very long and weird and a, a difficult process, if you haven't ever encountered it before, but, uh, it's, it's fun to do. Since you get gels, where you can see nice bands, and it's, if, it's nice if you get good result, but... Because of his mistake, we had to take it from someone else, which luckily there was. Otherwise, we were royally screwed. And, we would've had to, uh, do it all over again. Please, a double kill, I don't think we're gonna get it. Please game, I need to see... Did he just... Did he just fall down? Did he just actually kill himself by falling down? Oh, that, that's gold. Oh, that, that's actually gold. Oh, that's just, that's beautiful. So is there anything there actually? No, it ends over there at the bridge. I'm gonna guess the guy died, uh, I'll make a second save? Here? Cuz if he didn't, I, I am not happy. Alright. I need to make sure that that guy over there doesn't spot me, so, um, there we go. But yeah, my, uh, group member was, "That was fun," cuz he came too late, constantly. Um, just had to go on other things, just was a general nuisance, but, uh... My competence, of course, fix it all, is that, is that someone, no, that's just a, just something else. Oh, that's where I already shot people, okay. I would like to be able to spot a body. That's explosive, but... Oh, no, I don't wanna open the console. No one there, let's cross the road quickly. Uh... Did they spot me, or is that just a church? I'm not sure. There was a shot, but, I'm not sure. Yeah, normally, uh, if you don't play on the, the difficulty that I am, you'll have an indicator... Showing if you were spotted or not, let's fall down here. Uh, is there someone there? Oh, that's, uh, beautiful, there's a... No? Alright, I've been spotted, um... Let's do this a bit faster, but go properly around. Okay. I think I was spotted there. But, I was spotted for sure there, the, the other bits. Alright. Alright. But yeah, in the end, you got, uh, some modified E. coli, which is a bit, it's, it's fun to do, but it's annoying to work with, because everything you have... And work with has to go in the genetically modified organisms bin, of which you have way too little. So everyone has to share, and you never have enough, it's really annoying. Can I, oh, ouch. Alright, so we're back here. Save the game, I haven't been spotted yet. But now I have to write a report about that, and then I'm bloody done. For the weekend, because next week I have more classes. And after that, I have an exam, and after that, I have another report to make. There is someone else here, I just stealth kill him. No need to waste ammo. Stabby stabby. But we will drag your body. So it's nice and hidden inside here. So, there we'll drop. So is there anyone else in here? I don't think so. Alright, awesome, there's no one here, but there is health. I'll just grab you too. And drop it. Are all practicals group based? No, they're not. It really depends on the practical itself. Um... For example, stuff like this is usually group based, because... Say, uh, I wanna search this, I guess I can't. Good, because say you, uh, for this practice, we need to make agar plates, for example. You need 12 per person, if you do that in groups of one, you'll need a metric ton of that, of agar, which is just wasteful. So doing it in two is way better, but for example, for, um... For organic chemistry, you usually work alone. About 90 meters away. Uh, purely because that, that's fine for the, for the application. Oh, hey there buddy. Did he just see me? Yes, he did! Now he's dead, but the guy behind there will see it. But, uh, it still goes untagged. But that's fine, I can... Hmm, 19 meters, right, bit of wind. Oh shit, okay, now the wind changed even more. Okay, got him. I saw you, okay, um... Oh, you have to be joking. Okay, fine, we'll take care of you first. Then you. And then the guy behind there. Oh, nice, there's another one. Yeah, I fucked this up. I think I'll just reload to save. Yeah, just load the game, uh, which one is 35? Um, yeah, I think what I'll do is instead of starting to snipe, I'll need to take care of the officer, though, that I would very much like. But I'll do it like, right here. Okay, that was bad. That was just really, really bad. If I can take care of him in a bit of a different way, um, I'll be able to, uh, hopefully... Lure him that way. Before I lure someone else, okay, that's him, good. Good, 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 good. Oh, I need to, oh, over the other shoulder, how do I do that again? How do I go over your other shoulder? Okay, good, good, good. Ghost distracted pistol kill, okay? Not sound masked, but that's not relevant. But will they spot him? I think they will. I am sound masked here, am I not? I'm actually, yeah, I am, good, good, good. But I'd rather... I'm gonna make a second save here, right here. But yeah, for example, organic chemistry, where you all work alone, that's usually not... Can I pick up your body? Found save code. Awesome, no idea where we're gonna use that for, but... Okay, let's put down the body. Drop the body. Let's search him anyway. Uh, because for that, the only thing you need more of is just, is the, uh, is the glass, and of that, you have tons. Um, and for the rest, the compounds you work with aren't particularly expensive. So that's fine. Okay, so we've taken care of you, we have found the save code, um, uh, there's no save in here, is there? If there is, better look for it now, so we don't have to do that later. Uh, no, just some beds, okay? Now I can... Uh, let's not, let's just fall over here. I would love to clear this out, but I need a way better idea of how many units there actually are here. Because if I get boned by someone from the side, that's bad. Now, that's a save, and that's a lot of stuff. Nothing here, but I would love to use this code. And a letter to home. Alright, but, uh, I have no idea how the next practical is gonna look like, but it'll be fun, because it's gonna be NMR, which is Nuclear Magnetic Resonance Spectroscopy, I think. Uh, and it's in general, generally, it's, it's, it's a lot of fun to do. Because it's a very interesting concept that I, uh, I'm going to love to learn more about. Don't you love it? It's gonna be hydrogen nuclear magnetic resonance. We might do a bit with, uh, carbon 13, uh, or phosphor or the other ones, but I would love it. Alright, uh, this is, oh no, oh no, 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 um... No, I need the other guy to... Ohhh shit. Yeah, not, this is not gonna work out. I need to shoot this way better. Um, where's the 40? Okay, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna not go on here, right now. I'm gonna go try and get back to where I am sound masked, and shoot them normally. Am I sound masked here? No, am I sound masked here? It's just too far. Can I sabotage this thing to make sound? No. Okay, you there, you're the problematic one. Yeah, this requires way too much ammo. Ha! Behind? No, just in front, but alright, I need to fall back way, way more. But, uh, at least it's gonna be more fun to do the classes and the exam about that than, uh, this gonna be this practical, because this practical is just getting boring and annoying at the end, at a certain point. This should mask my shots. Right? 70... Okay, that could be a one... Come on, mask it, come on. It still doesn't, I have to go over here. Climb, could you climb? There we go. Okay, but can I hit that guy? See, that's a trouble I can't. So, okay, there's that guy, that's good. But I need to take out the one at the back first, and I can't. Wait, what are they sp-? They're spotting me. I think it's arm. No, it's liver. Or just intestines, sure. And... Um, yeah, of course they can see me, because I'm very much not in cover. Uh, I think I'll just do it the silent way, just go all around, don't even care. Just go like, right here. I can actually climb up here, if I can get the prompt again, there we go. And just ignore this whole shebang. If I can find something to sound mask myself, I will use it. Was I just shot at? No. Because the guy there at the back is a problem. If I could sh- shoot him, I would be golden. Actually, there, oh, if I can pull him over this, that would be awesome. "Your mission: Ready to kill everyone." It becomes a lot easier if you just kill everyone. No, it, it, so it isn't, but it's either a bonus objective, or it makes everything a whole lot easier. Oh, what is this? Okay, so... That wasn't really worth anything to go down there. I was wondering, maybe there's a secret path, but no. Hmm. The thing is, C-space, if you, um... If you leave your back open, as in you don't kill everyone, you might get spotted at a moment you don't think you will. And that's what I'm trying to prevent here. Can I get over this, please? Yeah. Like that. No, nothing here. Yeah, nothing here, buddy. So basically, what I'm trying to do is either find engines and shoot a lot of people, or sneak. Something, something il duce. Now I'm in the city, and it becomes a lot harder to snipe. Oh boy. Nope. Au revoir. There shouldn't be anyone who was able to kinda see that. Oh, there's people walking, uh, ah, well. They might find a dead body, but... So, uh, let's just do this silently and sneakily. But let's make a save, just in case. This was the last one in the list for, uh, the town here. Anything over here? Also just an emerge, yeah, probably. Alright. Oh, rooftops, I love rooftops. Nah, I'd love to stay high, but... I mean, I am Dutch, I always love to stay high. Can I? Can I not jump up this? Oh, pathetic. Uh, but I should be able to, oh, co- What? Well, well, thank you there, game. You are very well programmed. Can I jump this? No, but I can drop down. Drop down. I remember someone in, up there, that I would have loved to taken out, take out, but I don't see why to, to get, uh, something, something. Roman ideals. Uh, I'd love to play Imperator, but time's not there yet, and I haven't gotten a response from, uh, Brad Lansford yet about the, uh, designer, uh, job. Oh, that's someone. Uh, that's, wait till he turns around, if he ever does. Alright, good. Oh shit, who do we notify? Something, something il duce. So I think we just startled someone, and made them search, but we didn't actually get properly spotted. Hello there. Oh, there's two of them, um... There we go, we should have not been spotted there. Just gonna be slow exploration for a bit here. Be some capable of looking around, a lot of corners here in this nice third-person vis- vision. Oh, it's a bit cheaty, but I'll take what I can get in this game. Okay, there should be some people. Oh, just gotta, gotta quick save, moments. Yeah, there is someone over there. Now, will he see me from the corner of his eye? Uh, no. He is just taking a nap. Con volete il duce, alright. But hey, this mission is going a lot better than the first one, which was absolute garbage compared to this. Ah. Okay, someone either is looking for me or spotted me. And yes, indeed. Oh! Yeah, that was bad, they... Okay, so there was someone behind me too. Uh, they were, okay, we did not make him take a nap yet, but there is someone here that I need to make sure to, uh... That should have been fine. Uh, what are these, these guys doing? "What is your studying regime?" Um, what do you mean, for just exams in general? Because that's pretty standard, I dare say. Uh, oh shit. Ha, ghost, I, I think he saw me, y- just a guess. Um, is there anyone else here? Well, there's a lot of people over there, but they are not alarmed, and that's very good. Okay, so they're... No, let's just pick up the body first. And ditch it inside. Make him take a nap. It's possibly that, possible that the throwing alarms someone? I... I think you might have seen someone die. What the? I can't keep this up, I don't have the ammo. But I think I just... Okay, nope. I need to not kill anyone here, uh, they're noticing it, that's bad. So, let's just ignore this whole place up front, and just carry on this way. Uh, usually what I do is I just go over all the, the... All the literature again. Baited. Uh, pick a body. So I need to actually go a bit faster, but just drop it, which is silent. Because it's fine killing them, I would love to, but I'd rather do it the silent way. Yeah, what I usually do is I just take the study guide, which, or some other source, which tells me what I need to study. Go over all the literature again, and notes. And then do that until I have the actual exam, and the day before that, I, uh, I go over the test exams. That usually gets me a passing grade. It's pretty simple, but, uh, it differs a lot per person, so... I wouldn't recommend this. Jesus! Christ, what was that? Oh, that's the partisans! Well, I don't think they really care about discretion now. So this is the church. But Jack! So now we need to find that one grave. Uh, is there a way for me to take a look at that? Service records? No, I don't think so. Search the graveyard. Okay, just search it I guess. Is there anyone here that I can easily take out to help my buddies? No, but there's a sniper spot there. I think it's gonna be in the mausoleum. Mausoleum key required. Alright, so we'll need to find that possibly. But maybe, that's what we need to find here. Yeah, the um... Compared to the first game, uh, or the second one, I'm not sure, which was just... Generic German environment. They went for a lot prettier environments, uh... I agree there. I hear this is the bit where they said like, the HQ might be able to help, yeah. I don't think I, I got a hint about... Where to look for at the graveyard, which is a bit annoying. Let's make a save and let's see how uh, if I can help out a bit here. Nah, they'll probably see me, which is just how I expect this game to work. So I, I think I might need to shoot an urn here, but I'd really rather not. But... I'm not sure what I'm looking for. Oh, I can get up here. Okay, that's pretty good to know. But... Drop down there please. Ha! Oh, that's good. Knock him out with a grenade. It feels like so, you can push this or... Go to the angel, she might have something. Um, even if they, by the way, spotted me there, I'll, they'll lose my vision uh, after a while, but... I am not going here for full ghosts like I did in some other games, for example this honor where... It is super hard and with, without an easy way to know if you've been spotted, I don't think it's gonna be that easy to do. Could you give me some goddamn hint about this damn graveyard? Um, do I have any melee attack? Oh, I have a s- rock, I might be able to... No, can't break pots with that. Is there anything here? Uh, maybe this lone grave here. Nope. Alright, I think the church might be partisan HQ, so I'm gonna... I'm gonna go inside. Uh... Is that a German? No, it's a friendly guy. Okay, this is not partisan HQ, this is enemy HQ. Alright. Hmm... Yeah, I... I don't know what I'm looking for, which is kind of annoying. Alright, I'm gonna go systematically check every single grave, see if there's a... See if there's a prompt. I, I doubt it though. Check all these... I, maybe, oh wait, wait, I think it was a sniper that was the leader of the partisans and I think she is somewhere up here. Ah, bollocks. Oh, I'm zeroed at a hundred, oh well. Shot through the heart and you're to blame. Darling, you gave love. Uh, what? You're not German. You're probably about a hundreds. Dammit. Okay, this is gonna be a nice one. Oh, uh, it's gonna be double kill. A triple kill? Nice, see anyone else? Yeah, I see so, what? There we go. Winds a bit there. Boom! Headshot. Ah, I wonder what's going for through the eye. I still want a proper gonad shot still and uh, proper through the scope on an enemy sniper. Don't think there's any more easy targets for me here, but I do think... Okay, that guy's dead, then it's uh, it's okay. Is there anyone? Oh, there's a German. Hellooo. Go for a nice... Threw a lot of organs. Why is someone still shooting at me? I didn't see the origin of that shot though, so I'm just gonna, oh shit! Okay, uh, well done there. We'll find the partisan HQ, cause that's the main objective of this, this mission, so... Where was the other shot coming from? That's a partisan. Where the hell are you shooting at buddy? There... Is there, wh- what? Did he just damage me by vaulting into me? Okay. At least I know who I am and aren't sh- shooting me. But yeah, all stealth is out of the window here. Is there any other enemy here? I don't see any. Yeah, here's a ton of Germans that I killed. I really don't see anyone. Am I being blind here? This, these are moments where a um... A minimap is really useful. Maybe at the HQ. Yeah, we still need to find, aw, they destroyed that, what a shame. Uh, you're a German. That was a bit bad. Wind is a bit that way? Come on. Okay, I think I'm adjusting too much uh, height wise. How far are you? You're sixty meters away. Should be about this. There we go, finally. Are you a German? No, you're a partisan. I remember a partisan being over there. Where the hell are they shooting at? I have no idea. Is anyone up here? I have the feeling they are just shooting at air and then nothing in particular. Maybe there's people over here? Yeah, that was a shot at me. There we go. Straight through the heart. If I just remember that I have it zeroed at about uh, uh, zero right now? Don't see any more Germans. But uh... Silence is dead. But not here. About fifty meters, oh whoa, who's shooting at me? Oh, he just moved, damn you! I need to shoot very quick. Straight through the hearts. Ah, close. Okay, who was the other guy shooting at me? No. Come out buddy, you know you want to. There we go. Oh, fine. Um, partisans happened to the stealth. Basically I came into a bit where the partisans were already fighting, so it was like, alright, uh, it's useless to go stealthy here since they are all, all already alerted. So uh, stealth is dead. I spent a bit of time bumming around the graveyard, not finding what I was supposed to find. So now I'm just looking for the partisan HQ, since they can probably give me dynamite. And since it's all close combat here, uh, I can't really be that stealthy unfortunately. I'd love to, but I just can't. It's not feasible. So uh, walking through the town, one-shotting enemies, should be fine. One-shotting, he said. I am so skilled. All this time and effort to not alert anyone and it's all wasted. It's such a shame. But yeah, still haven't been able to find their headquarters. And this place is pretty big. Which is a bit annoying and makes it a lot harder. Hey there. At least I've helped you unplug your ear. I hang here. Uh, I'm gonna make it? Yeah, there we go. Uh, there was someone else. There was also an officer here, so I need to make sure to take care of him. Gonna guess about a f- one fifty? Yeah, too overcompensated, but this will take care of him no matter what. That would have been very useful before this. Can I please find their damn headquarters for once? I'm gonna guess that this would have been trivial. Absolutely trivial with the minimap. Oh hey, look at this! Where's my dynamite? TNT, there we go. Now... That is what I like. Alright, so we got... How many have we got? I think I got infinite. But I just got a... That's just ammo, ammo, trench gun. No, I want my, I want my trench gun. The only way to unlock the trench gun is to actually get kills with it. So you'll have to find that during missions. And then shoot people with it. See, that's someone I'm gonna shoot. I got, I got a stealth specialist ribbon for that kill. I mean, he didn't know I was there, but... I'm sure shit wasn't stealthy. I think this is the way to the graveyard. Yeah, this is the way. What a shit show this is. But... Seeing as how they're calm, I'm gonna guess I cleared out most or all of the Germans. But yeah, those guys were in a firefight when I came here. And it was right here what I could blow up. Nice and gloomy, dark and spooky. Hello, what are you? Uh, no, a Panzer... Do I have a Panzerfaust? Oh, please tell me I can find a Panzerfaust here somewhere. Please, oh, game. And then the door just magically opens. Come on... Where is a Panzerfaust here? Ah, this is just cruelty. There's another warhead. There's mines, 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 the bloody wazoo. But no actual Panzerfaust. Scheiße. Anyway, let's continue. Now we need to get to the big, big doors and, uh, blow them up. I think because of the blowing up, it's very hard to do this mission proper stealth, but, uh, well, what do I know? At least I took care of the radio operator, otherwise this place would have been swarming with reinforcements. So is there a side entrance into this place? I don't think so. Let's just blow it wide open. Oh, here we can add a timer. So we don't have to shoot at it. What a pathetic explosion! Wow! That is a... Lot of dead Germans. Good lord! That is, uh, impressively done. Find a partisan HQ. By the way, we already did that. Has she... Is this gonna be one of those "Mofeminism is super cool cuz this woman killed all these Germans on her own"? No, there's multiple of that, right? You're here to help us? Fuck you! Oh my god, she's so... Sassy! Okay, I, I already don't like her, but the writing in this... Oh, it's just the end of the mission, okay. But... What did I not do? Now I got 3 out of 3. 23 ghost kills. I think that was about everything at the beginning, so let's continue, I guess. These levels are useful, but not in this difficulty, because you get perks, but we can't use those. Yeah, here, we can get another skill. We can get reduced fall damage or increase. Yeah, sure, useful, but... They don't apply, um... So we're almost at muzzle velocity, which is great and annoying, since it also means that we cannot, um... Since it means that we cannot... Actually, um... We need to relearn the, 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 the... Drop-off. I wanna go back to my knight skin. 10 liver shots for stability. That will... Oh, 10 double kills. Oh, you need to do all the other ones. Uh... Yeah. I'd say that's about right. Let's go. Regalino Viaduct. Ooh, that looks pretty cool. Are we gonna blow that up? Oh, no, that, please don't. Viaducts are cool. I don't wanna blow it up.
Ah, the sniper. My name is Lucio.
Yeah, Lucio, from the ruined castle. The angel got there in the nick of time.
Yeah, she, uh, she saved us. She's, uh, an angel of mercy, huh?
Uh, judging by the number of dead fascists, I'd say more like the angel of vengeance.
Maybe, but, um, she only kills evil men, huh?
And, uh, what about you? You only kill evil men?
But of course.
This grouchy voice is becoming a bit annoying when you constantly talk like this, because you have to talk like this when you're the good guy. So start mission? No, just operate radio, I'll do that after. First, let's talk to the angel of death.
You did well to find me at the castle.
So it was a test, to see if I'm, uh, committed to your cause.
Our people were about to be executed. Past experience suggests we can't always rely upon the allies. Is that what you want?
What past experience? The Italians were swapping sign all the time. They have no idea, no clue what allies are. Uh, what? A railway gun in Italy.
There must be a reason you haven't taken it out yourselves.
Hmm, I'm not sure, but I thought the only railway guns the Germans actually used were in Russia and France, and the French one was never shot. Uh, because it was positioned at the, uh, the Maginot Line. And the Russian one, it was used, but to no avail, cuz it was just used to shell a city. But... We'll see the size. If it's a smaller one, okay, the Germans did produce and use them, but in very limited quantities. But if it's bloody massive, I'm gonna go shit. That's our side objective then. So, oh, it's a big map. Where do we... Okay, we start here, it's good to know. It's the wrong button. So find the down pilot, find the crash, that's the same. I'm gonna guess, yeah, the, the train will be here. I'm gonna guess the plane is either here, or, but I'm gonna guess there, where you can pass like this, or like this. So I think going along here is the best way. Uh, oh, we need to talk to this guy. Ah! The, the cook, the cook voice. Why is this guy constantly staring at his compass? At least the other two are brooding, but this guy is like... "I really like my compass." Yeah, start the mission. Okay, um, that's a smaller caliber one. But I, I love railway guns. They are pretty cool, because I want a bigger caliber, it's better caliber. Uh, let's make a save. Alright. Oh, good lord. Um, destroy the armored car. Clear the German checkpoints, find the ammo cache, and destroy the additional one. And destroy the Nazis' transport depot, which is this. That's... A lot of stuff. Okay. And we enter from here. Okay, so let's go to the, um, let's go like this. Sounds about right. So we first go to the left and go clear the coast. That's probably gonna be our escape vector too. Um... Can I go down, please? Thank you. Uh, I'll probably stream this for another half hour, hour or so, and then go, uh... Go grab some dinner and work on a report again. Can't play video games all day. Let's just make a save here. If I die or get spotted, then I don't have to do the whole dropping down bit again. Wow. Seriously, they just give you a very cheap freeway to fire your gun. Oh, but this is even better. Well, to make use of it, I do have to spot a German first. Okay, there is one. Two in fact, but that's very far away. Because I, therefore I don't know if there's anyone else. So it's a bit worthless unfortunately. Uh, it's due to all the buildings around. But I'm gonna guess that is a checkpoint. Okay, there, I see you. Hey, is that a, is that what I think it is? It is? None, it's just a cache. Yeah, that was all garbage. Let's just load the game again. Um, 28, sure. I think that's perfect, yeah. Alright, let's see if I can do this a lot better. Since there is basically global sound masking here, if I just wait long enough. So we have the guys over there, the officer. Okay, I really... Um, do not want him to see me, but there's quite a lot of people here. So, okay, I see you and you. Ok, oh! Okay, they don't line up, not at the right moment. How far away is it? It's about 50 meters. I'll take care of those later. Let's first take care of this, so I don't need to worry about my back. Uh, don't turn around, don't turn around, don't turn around. Good boy! Uh, they saw that. But they... Yeah, I'll reload. Bah, 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 bah. Okay, this is gonna be a lot harder than I thought here, but... I deserve this. Just shoot me. Come on, you can do it. Donk. Yeah, I, I very much deserved that. Let's kick that again. Uh, we should be able to take care of him from here. How far away were you? 40 meters, that's really, really close. Window's a bit, so... Come on, you know you want to come from the window. Take a little looksee. That was shit. If I do this quick, I might be able to get the shot the first time. Fairly a wind. Still masked. Right? Sound mask, good. That is a lot of experience you get for those shots. Car, ground, penetrative, headshot, rifle kill, empty lung. Got him, that is pretty good. Yeah, he noticed. Good. I should be able to lure him to the back there and then s- stick it to him. He should be the only one. And he should not go to me. Uh, not even abated. That's a shame. God, did it just say just "man got killed"? How did they even know? Ah, no longer silenced. Okay, so we need to load this one, and... Okay, so I need to be a bit quicker. The fact that this is working is utter bullshit, but I do not mind. Officer, forty meters away. What is wrong with your chat? Um, I'm not sure, uh, it's... It's a bit weird. Uh, it does it all the time, normally when there's connectivity issues, but there aren't any right now. Okay, zero meters, so a bit lower. I need to wait for the next, uh, big, big cannon shots. But they should be basically dead on the money. Bit, a bit like, bit like this. Should be very, very little at forty meters, and this very low, uh, wind. But we'll need to wait for the Gustav cannon. Although, there we go. Not sound masked, that's very bad and very annoying, cuz that means that we have to... Wait a bit more. Oh, that was just after the shot, so we need to load the thirty-six minute one. Which was just after the kill, okay, that's perfectly fine. But you, see, that guy is there too. So the problem is I need to take out both, just depends which one is looking. Okay, hmm... If I'm quick, I could shoot both. How far are you? Ooh, if I can be very quick, I can take out both. I'll need to make, hmm, his head is behind that, that's really bad. What? Wh- wha- wait, 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 wha-? Before or after a shot? No, it's after the shot. Thirty-six still. Uh, I, I don't know how to fix it, it's just something that, uh, that Chazzy likes to do. Forty meters, forty-six meters. Zeroed, so it needs to be just a bit above, I think I was shooting above. Hmm, I really don't like this waiting for the, uh, for the railway gun, but it works the best, and I don't see any, anything around here. Ah, shit, he noticed. But he didn't... Shouldn't have alarmed anyone. If he didn't see me, he won't shoot. Yes, I know. Come on... Come on... Silence my damn shots. Oh, there's two of them, okay, that's good to know. Alright, nevermind, this is gonna take too long. I'm gonna just reload this one and go stealthily, just crawl along. Maybe if I'm lucky, I can line up a shot. Okay, so there is a lot more than I thought. There's a lot, lot more people than I thought. There's four in total, okay. That's gonna be tough. And I don't see anything to mask my sound, but I do see explosives. So I think that might be the best way to do this. Yeah, cuz if I shoot that guy... They are going to notice, for sure. Let's make a save here. Let's figure out a way to do this. Hmm... I could, for example, kill that guy over there, but the others would see... Could kill the guy over there in the far... Or... Oh, I have an idea. Yeah? You have silenced weapons. Yes, but the problem is that... They will, I could only kill maybe one or two before they start noticing. Yeah. Bad, bad, bad me. I can try though, I can always try. As you can see, you really need to hit that right, otherwise it's just gonna get screwed up. But I could maybe, no, I could try luring them over here with rocks, but... Double kills are probably the, the go-to solution if I get a good shot in. I'll see if I can actually take them out without them noticing that quickly. Cuz for example, these two guys are now having the back turn towards the rest, so... Shooting him... And then the other might work. Yeah, see, he did notice. Okay, this might still work. As long as they don't spot me, I'll be fine. So I need to actually stay in the bushes... And wait till the next silenced shot. Nope, poke, poke, come on, come on. Uh, th- th- yeah, what? That didn't kill him? What are you joking about, game? Herder! A 7.62 bullet to the face doesn't kill them. What? Or try killing this guy first, and then the other. I really need to shoot a soon, uh, as the, uh... As the, uh... Ah! Even with a helmet, that will not help you, not at this, this range. Helmet's mostly protecting and traveling on small arms fire, not a gun like this. Let's just start with this guy then. Forty meters, should be right there. Come on. They didn't notice. There is one more guy behind there though. Oh no, they're all there. No, this is too beautiful. Line up, line up, come on, you know you want to, you've, you've seen it. Oh, you're cautious now. Ah, they're walking in unison, what a shame. Yeah, they've seen me. But that's still fine, since they do not know where I am. And I can possibly line up another two. Come on, silence, silence the shot. Oh, do any of them wear grenades? I don't think so. Ya... Ya gotta be joking. Oh yeah, you know, it, it, it won't kill him... If you shoot him like right in the damn jaw. Um, still cannot see a grenade on any of them, which is a big, big shame. A double kill is worth it to actually shoot. Uh, even without sound masking. What? I do not get how I am not killing these. Uh, am I zeroed at something else or something? No, I'm zeroed at, at zero meters. Let's just shoot when these are lined up. Shooting one through the spleen and the other to the head should work out. You only kill one? Yeah, that's what I don't want. I like the, the more silenced the whistle you get, but... Okay, maybe, alright, let's just save the game here and another one. Let's try this. Just one? How stupid... Is this game being right now? Oh, no lining up? What a shame. I really do not get how liver and abandonment, uh, shots work. He is walking very far away, which is very good for me. Crunch. You don't need a skull there, buddy. How far are you now? Further and further. Now we just need our... Good old Fuhrer. Where the... What? Yeah, 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 fuck this. Dumb. Now I really want to get out of this small bit without anyone actually getting notified, so... Yeah, like, like that'll work. It will actually, if I kill him. Yeah, they noticed they lost another person, okay. Silencing should be happening soon. Shit, I lost sight. Hmm, might line up, if I'm lucky. Take care of the other guy first. Oh, come on! Wow! Wait, did his bullets just curve out of the barrel towards me when I, uh, when I shot him? Wow, that's, uh... This game, man, come on. Give me some silencing, you know I want it. You indeed lost one troop. Ooh... How are they doing? I'm not saving just yet. Yeah. Because of that. Hey... Oh, that's just a bush, it's not actually someone. Where's Mr. Officer?
This'll come in very useful.
Oh... Save game? How far away are you? About one, one, one hundred. Well, there's the other guy. Wait a bit. Should be about the same. Shit. Come on, railway gun. Ohhh shit! I'm not here, I'm not here, y-you don't see me! Okay, okay, that's good to know, that, uh, they do actually see you. Oh, I'm zeroed at a way, way... Where's the other shot coming from? Ooh, that's mine. So I think I just cleared out... Almost everything here. There might be some more patrols ahead. At least everyone here is dead. And there is a nice engine here, two, punk. Ah, that would've been beautiful from the other side, actually. Holy hell, what the hell are you? Oh, you're the... You are the armored vehicle we need to take out. Is there another checkpoint? Yes, there is. With the big, the big gun. Uh, what I'm gonna do is save here, hello there, R-type, and gonna try and swim. Oh wow, uh, welcome to GTA III, guys, we cannot swim. I mean, it makes sense, because everything would get wet, you wouldn't be happy, but... So, there's a few ways to take out these vehicles. Uh, you usually need a satchel for it. Ah, it's the buried type, I see. You there? Y-you there? Target expert, oh nice. Do I see an engine around here to blow up? No, I don't. But I can probably kill you from here if you, uh, how far are you, 50 meters? Forty? If we get our little... What? Um, okay. Ok-okay, that wasn't a good idea. Oh hey, there's the other guy, good. Wanted to take care of the, ah shit! Okay, let's restart the checkpoint? Um... Let's actually go prone? He saw me. So... I need satchel charges to take care of that thing properly. You can do it in other ways... But you need to shoot it through the slot. So there's a slot, a very, very small slot in the front, and we can hit it through that. It's that hole, right there. Did they spot me? I don't think so. If we get a satchel charge, we will be able to blow it up, but I don't have those. It's rotating all the other way constantly. We got it during a silence moment! Ohhh... That is really good! Did I just... I hate myself. I just loaded the wrong goddamn safe. But this might be still right. Ah, well, I'm an idiot. That's fair enough. Can someone shoot me? Please? It happened before, yeah, let's not talk about that. Yeah, see, now it's silenced, sound masked, but it's not happening, but I'm willing to do it again. Too low, hello? Ha, deserved that. Just turn the right moments, please? Uh, uh, what? Um, there usually is a weak spot on these things. But that's... Usually, um... On the ve, the body of the vehicle itself. So... Yeah, just shoot me, I deserved that. Yeah, we killed you, they don't know where I am. That is not the type of sniping that I want coming my way. Okay, I need to kill him before he does that. Okay, let's throw a grenade, throwing grenades is better. He says not having grenades. Shit. Ohhh fuck! Okay, I think we're gonna have to rethink this entire thing here. Beautiful. Okay, let's load the game, it loaded a lot earlier. There. Okay, I'm not gonna do the same approach as before then. That's not working out. Getting close is nice and all, but too much, uh, heat on me, too difficult to get a good shot that's silenced. Now here... There's another guy though. Now I just need to make a very quick save here. And hope we get a... Get a railway shot very, very, very soon. Alright, no range adjustment. Come on, game, throw me a bone, throw me a bone! Perfect. Cause since there is a secondary vehicle that is mobile, I'm gonna see if I can take care of that first. The good thing about those vehicles is, is that you can blow them up with one shot. There is a tank at the back, which if you hit it, if it's the vehicle that I think it is, which makes this trivial. Is it someone else walking? Save the game first. Uh, someone walking over there. There we have our vehicle. Do we have anyone else over there? I don't think so, I think we just have the guy over here. Which I should be able to take out fairly easy. That was rather crucial. But ver, cause these were the guys that were constantly shooting at me. Oh... Oh, I, that was our explosion from the one that I already sabotaged. That's a shame. However, I think we unlocked the upgrade for our Mosin. So... Our... Our muzzle velocity upgrade is here. Up, oh, upgrade bonus not applied in authentic, okay, that's good to know, so nothing to relearn. For a second there, I thought there was a cave entrance, but no. Okay, so there's guys over there, that's, uh, our cannon. Ah, there's a little camp there. There's explosives? There was another guy here, wasn't there? That's just bushes. Now it's a question, can I cross this road without dying utterly? I will check that out by just doing it. Cause I can, uh, cause there should be a generator here, there might be a generator here. Which I could exploit very, very well. There surely is more around here. I could check, actually. I already have tagged him. Okay, so there's about three people there. Okay, I should be able to take out the guy in the tents, actually, right now. Ouch! But I think I got spotted. No, actually. Are they, are they just not gonna investigate this? Shit, that was really dumb. Nope, they shot, which is bad, that's what I don't want to happen. So, just ditch them all in here. Drop you, is that a satchel charge? That will make me very happy. Cause there's a car which drives by here every once in a while. Uh, search crates, that's what I wanna do. There's usually good stuff in here. Shogun ammo, oh, useless. Teller mine, teller mine TNT, should be able to use the TNT at least. Let's see if we can approach this place from the back a lot better. Okay, there's four again. Oh, come on, silence, please, now, ru-uh... How far away you, like, six, four fifty, fifty meters? Should be able to shoot him on the next... Silent shot. And then run in, silenced. And then take care of... The big guy. The big guy. Shit. No. Wasn't silenced. Not the way that I wanted it to be. So we just shot him. It's still warm, yes indeed it is. Yeah, walk, come on, walk, walk in front of each other there. You know you want to. Cannot see the hole there. Is that it? Alright, if I die I'm just gonna reload anyway. Okay, let's load the game here. Without the car spawning me. Nitro, stop missing you buffoon. One more though, one more. Come on. Yes! As long as we drag you out of the way, no one will find this. And then we can search you. Okay, now we just need to make sure to take care of this big gun. Let's save. I don't think a shot here will matter at all, cause there's no one to hear. Cause, uh, should be fine here. If it's silenced, even better, but I don't think it'll matter that much. Right through with the barrel, quality. Don't think anyone noticed. Okay, so there is still a car though, that we have to take care of. Now, I would love... Did I actually do any of these side objectives yet? Uh, the car, that's the car that we need to take care of. I would love to take care of the car, so we're gonna wait a bit. Wait until he comes around again, shouldn't be that long. A shots here don't matter at all. Which is good for me. We'll just need to wait a bit. And I hope it isn't too long. Uh, where are, we're here. What, what road does he take? Probably this circle here. So it means we can, after this we'll go... Uh, we can already go there, to the final objective, that's fine. So there's a few ways you can take these cars out. They have, uh, 3 people in them. They have one in the front who's a driver. If you kill him, he'll stop, the car will stop. You have one operating the big, um... The big turret on top. And you have a third guy at the back who is also a gunner. So if you attack from the back, you're dead. There's a satchel placement on the front, so if you kill the driver and the front gunner, you can take it out. Or you can shoot the gas tank at the back. Or a reserved gas tank, I'm not sure. And it'll blow up all the same. Uh, I'm gonna go for that. I should be able to hit it just fine. Um, and it'll make sure that it's a lot easier to go around. Is there anything up there? I don't think so. All I need, I can already actually run that way. Just save again. Oh, there's actually, there's quick saves, so, uh, sorry. Checkpoint saves. Since I need to shoot it at the back anyway, I can wait. Now we're going towards the middle, which is fine too. So we should be able to already see it approach way, way earlier. Okay, so this is the middle. Now, I want, oh, no. I wanna get over there. Cause there is a... Hey, what are you? Okay. Can someone just shoot me in the head right now, please? Wait, here? Eh, fair enough. Cause I know nothing will be coming, I'll just run ahead. Don't care about the heart rate. Go here, lie down in the camouflage. And wait till the next shot. If I can do, hit him through the head against that, it will be beautiful. Good, heart rate slowing. Uh, how far are you? Uh, 50 meters. Uh, he's getting closer, I'm gonna guess about 40. I'll just go for the... Zero, zero. Okay, now I need to shoot at the back. Yeah, of course I hit him one. But that's not good. Um, that is still the best way, though. I just need to get good and hit the shots. I could probably use a well rod for one of them. Uh, I should just make a quick save here. Save game. I could even try hit the truck as it comes over the bridge. But I can do that once this is turned on. Shoot the guy in the back first, it's a better idea. Ow! Dammit! Uh, nooo, yes. No, it's this one. I maybe if I could kill both of them at the same time, but I need to hit him in like, exactly the guts. Otherwise it doesn't count. See if we can do that. No, not anymore. Zero range adjustment. What? Oh, I was letting the wind affect my aiming way too much. I'm gonna guess they noticed. Wait, they didn't? No, but they did. You were quite obviously not on target, what? Um, no, I think I was over-adjusting way too much. Since there is slight wind, but this is only 40 meters, so it doesn't matter here. So right here should do it, if I'm at zero. It'll drop off a very small amount, but it'll still, it'll hit him in the neck. Should start firing right about now. Could just shoot him right there. Okay, that's not good. Did he go even low? No, now it's the wind, now the wind's gonna matter. I do not get why I'm constantly missing these shots. Usually it goes fine lately. I know what I can hit on the ammo truck, by the way. That was lucky. Nah, let's just wait a bit. Reload here. Did he just see him, or not? No, he's actually, what is the hell is he doing? Okay, once he's back there, he'll spot him, so I need a very, very soon another railway cannon shot. Come on, game. Do it for Papa. Perfect. Stealth specialist my ass, but I'll take it. That's not, I just wanted to search it, but hey. Okay, now the fun can start. Save game. There, please. There's someone else there, it was another one. Hey, I, ah, there. Wait, wasn't there another guy there? Oh, there. Ah, this is horrible. Just gonna lie down here. So way bad advantage point. Okay. Let's first take care of you. For 50 meters, uh, about. I am so bad. I need a bit of reaying here in my life. 16 meters, so 0 at 100. Won't work. But, alright, I need to move away a bit more, these shocks are being very annoying. What? Well, of course, kinda makes sense that he saw that, but... There we go. There's still a guy over here, yeah. Too quick. How far are you, 100? 50, there must be someone else there. So close. There we go. Now, since he'll probably see that... Not ghost though. Nope, let's redo that again. How far are you? 60? 80? Okay, 0 at 100 then? No, 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 ah, damn it. Keep missing these pretty easy shots. It's a very slight amount of wind and it's 80 meters total. There we go. That was a good shot. No, it's not masked, it's not masked. Doesn't matter. Empty long time, ah! Alright, I'm gonna get this down for once. Wait, what? How? Must mean they... Okay, they are, they are not lines. Are they now? Yeah, they are. But they still do not know where I am. Come on, mask. Fine. Ah, just... Screw this, really. Oh hey, I would love... Love to actually get up there. Hello there. But, um... I'm gonna call it here for now. I'm gonna start working on a report instead of being shitty at sniping games. And if I mad cuz ba... Um, I'm not sure why I'm missing all the time, I mean, probably cuz I'm not aiming right, but... It's a bit frustrating when you're just off by little, little, little bit every single bloody time. So I would've expected that shot to land way more to the right due to the wind, but... Nah, anyway. You're so bad at video games you would rather study, harsh, um... Well, the thing is, it has been two hour, two and a half hours even, and I did say about an hour ago that I would stream for maybe an hour or an hour more. So... He's at fifty meters, there was the guy there. He's at eighty meters. So... I would imagine that would be a kill, but it's not. And I'm still not sure why that isn't a kill. Cuz, um, you should go for long shot if you can't hit headshots, that's true. The thing is that if you... Long, uh, long shot are a bit easier. The problem primarily is that I, um... Headshots are very much more satisfying. And sometimes I have the feeling that it's a clear long shot. But other times... Like, that, that to me feels like a headshot, but it's not. Sometimes I feel, oh, this should be a clear, I destroyed his sternum, no way he is alive. But no, there he is, back alive and kicking. No idea. And it's that frustration which is a bit annoying in hitting, I think incorrect for wind too much. Um... That's possible. No, what I'm wondering right now is that, okay. He's eighty meters away. I'm correcting for wind barely cuz I shouldn't, but that's not a kill. Why is that not a kill? Try shooting dead on that at a hundred meters, but if I shoot it, if I mark it at a hundred, so I zero it at a hundred, and I'm, and he's at eighty, he's gonna hit a buff where I'm aiming, so if I, um, I see what you mean. So aim for his chest with a hundred zero. Doesn't kill him. So let's make a save here, so I don't need to do, uh... Save game, so... He's at eighty meters, the wind is very, very slightly to the left. Hmm, barely need to correct for that. And then I shoot at his... Wait, what? I wasn't zeroed at a hundred or a... No, I was zeroed at a hundred, okay. Where's the other guy? He saw it, that's fine. No, that didn't kill him. I mean, no correction either way when shooting at below a hundred meters. You need to, uh, oh, I see what you mean with below a hundred meters, yeah. Let's take care of the other guy first, actually. No kill. The thing is, even when going for long shots, you don't always kill them, and that's what is kind of frustrating. Nah, I couldn't even... I thought I was going for his head there, but no. Uh, no, I need, oh shit, I saw it zeroed at you, now it should be okay. Okay, so when aiming for the sternum, at about a hundred correction, you will hit the headshots. Did I kill him? No, I didn't. I find this very difficult, especially at the... Oh? Should be headshots. Pretty good one. Come on, I need to see you, my dudes. Come on. Pop your head out. Ha, I need to take care of them. These two, cuz they're overseeing a lot there, they have the high ground. How, I blew the front of his face off. So when I hit there... Finally, oh, that was really close. Wait, did people notice that? They did? How? Okay, let's just not fucking care about them, then, no, I need to, they're overlooking this whole bit. Doesn't matter, if you shoot them on the air, no, they'll survive that. This is so infuriating. That should be a headshot. Hmm, no, it isn't. That was a good shot. And they didn't notice. But that doesn't kill him. So about fifty meters. As forty is even less. Come on, silence again. Now we need to take care of... Him. Sixty meters, and I see the guy, he's over there, okay. Hmm, no, is he not gonna notice his corpse? No, he's not. What? What? Uh, not here, that's sound mask. Yeah, it is, okay, good. Fifty meters away. Silence... Um, I guess I did something wrong there. Okay, so... Maybe shoot him first? Sixty meters, getting closer. Okay, I think I'm, why, why am I not getting the silencing effect here? Aimed too high, I got the wind right, but I didn't get the height right. Uh, way too high, I still zeroed at the wrong one. How is that not silencing me? I think it's broken. Oh wait, you're here too, that'll help. Less haircuts, more headshots. Uh, the problem now is that this thing is not working, I'll need to go somewhere else. Either they fix it or it's gonna blow itself up, I don't care either way, I'm not gonna use it anymore. It's a big shame since it was a... Since it was a great position. Ha, uh, he says rats, I expect, uh... Probably prompted by the noise that I'm making. There's a guy right here, I think. I should be able to stealth assassinate him. Ah, shit. That probably still alarmed him, oh yeah, that's when I was running this way. Oh, it's working now. No, it still isn't. Or am I close enough now? Fifty meters. Okay, let's make a save here cuz apparently below it works fine, I guess. Cuz it makes a lot of sense. Seventy-five meters, he's getting closer and closer, it's zeroed at... What? Okay, I'm just not gonna care, let's see if we can get to the church, that would be great. See if we can sneak across here, scrap our well rod. Wow, did he just call me a son of a whore? That is so disgraceful. Still a ghost kill, strangely enough. But the two guys there kinda spotted me, so unless there's an engine here, which there isn't... I'll need to get, uh, more creative to get to the church, but I should be able to do it. Did I just hit like four headshots in a row and I just didn't care? Okay, I think... Actually going across this side is way better, there should be two people here, and if I keep an eye on both, I should be able to choose what target I'm gonna take out. Or, if I'm very, very lucky, meet them in the... Uh, sure. He survived that! Where's the other guy? Where is the other guy? This game is being very, very annoying. I see him over there. And now the question is... Can we make him not be noticed? Can we make him not be noticed? Should be like, 40 meters, very close. Should be able to wait for the next Gustav gunshots. Now he noticed the corpse. He didn't notice. He did notice. Come on, next Gustav shot, you know you want it. Shit. Yeah, um... Yeah, shouldn't he notice the corpse that's like right over there? I think my silence indicator is bugged. 'Cause it should have been indicating... Way, way more. Okay, I wanna try something save game. Okay, there was no one, no one below that. I thought it was, uh, I thought it was to zoom somewhere else, but it's not. No, I'm not here. Ha! Okay, that, that's not working. Um, I'm just gonna call it here. I'm gonna reload the game, so I hope the... So I hope the silencing icon is working better, 'cause without it, that's really hard to do this part. Uh, so it's not a combination of the game being bad and me being bad. That's always a nice combination. Anyway, cheers for watching the stream. I'm gonna go study. I might, I'll probably be back this weekend with Tiberian Sun, because that's next, maybe some Zelda. Depends on how quick I am with the report. Anyway, for now, cheers for watching, and till next time.